Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Everybody.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Do we have a new council member in the Zoom?
President Robinson is joining us a bit early, so.
Oh, I see. Well, we'll beat that out of him. He won't do it again.
That's right.
My city council days are behind me.
Before we get started, Mr. Leatherwood has got his hand up, so I'm going to just talk to him real quick. Larry, if you want to, do you need something or you just your hand up on accident?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I was muted. That's why now I'm okay.
Okay.
You don't have my picture, though.
No, not yet. We're going to put you back on mute until it's time for your presentation. All right, thank you. I recognize the initial CLJ. Calvin, is that you?
Yeah.
All right. Did you need something or just getting my attention?
No, I'm just following the meeting. That's all.
All right, I will put you back on mute then, sir. Thanks.
Thanks. Yep.
All right, folks. Wait, hold on. One, two, three, four, five, six.
I'm here.
I see.
Okay.
I see Dunbar's on, but I don't see her. There you are.
Member Jackson is making an attempt to log on.
I will hold off calling a roll order until he's.
And just for the record, I'm just going through. Which one of you guys kicked me out?
The whole thing just ended.
Like what?
Meeting today.
I just got back in, but it won't let me start my video.
Yeah, just a second. Hold on. Sorry. It does that whenever we start. Okay, you should all be able to start your videos now.
That's no good.
This isn't working.
Hey, I clicked my video the second time when we got, then it automatically cut me off, but I'm back on again, so.
Yeah, it's canceled out three or four times now. Well.
Did I do something to piss you off? Peter, you keep picking me out of the meeting, man. What's going on?
It's kicking me out too, folks. I'm not the only, you're not the only ones.
Three times the charm, right?
Yeah.
That's what they say. Worst case scenario, we could all go more longs tonight, but I don't think that's gonna, I don't think that's gonna jive with everybody. All right.
Double the stuff to deal with that cow next time, so let's do it tonight.
All I know is there's only one person different on this thing, and now everything crashes.
Oh, my.
That's all I'm saying.
Looking around for who that might be.
Okay, I think, oh, there's Kathy. Kathy Dunbar. All right, so I got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, we're going to get started because we're connected and it's working. So at 5:05, let's call this committee to hold the order. Sherri, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Here.
Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Betts.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Let me check.
Be struggling with getting on.
Yeah, all right. So we have a quorum. So first things first, we need a motion to approve the minutes from June 27th moved by Vice President Hussein. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar. I see her.
She's saying yes very slowly.
Okay. Councilmember Garza.
Oh, yeah, she's got, she's got problems. Sounds like she's got problems with her audio.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
I still don't see Councilmember Jackson, so motion carried for the minute seven zero.
Thank you very much. So first thing, Brian Jackson's here. Hold on, let me loop him into the meeting. First thing we have is public comment this evening. So folks, if you want to wish to raise your hand on public comment, it's unlike council, there is one opportunity and it must pertain to items on the agenda. So Sherri, are you ready for public comment? Very good. So right now we have three members of the public wishing to comment, Randy Dykhouse, Loretta Stanaway, and Elaine Fishoff. We are going to close public comment after Loretta Stanaway speaks. So you have approximately six minutes to raise your hand for public comment. So Randy, Randy Dykhouse is going to go first, followed by Loretta Stanaway. Randy, you are allowed to talk. So if you want to unmute your microphone, you have three minutes.
Okay. Hi, thanks. Randy Dykhouse, 418 North Sycamore. And I'm here tonight to urge you to vote no on the two reappointments to the Board of Water and Light Board of Commissioners. The two incumbents have each been on the board for more than a decade. One said 2006, the other said 2008. They certainly.
Randy, you'll get, you'll get your first three minutes. I'm sorry about that. No, you're fine, but the timer has started again. Thank you. Sorry about that.
All right. And the two incumbents certainly deserve our gratitude and admiration for their many, many years of service. However, it's now time for to allow a new generation of leadership step forward. In the best of times, it's no easy task to govern a $350 million company. These are not the best of times. BWL is at the intersection of three unprecedented public health crises, COVID, climate change, and the need to address racism and environmental justice. The board needs new voices and new perspectives to deal with these challenges. Keeping the same commissioners paves the way for continuation of past policies and actions. We cannot afford four more years of the same old, same old. In today's environment, the conservative options are not always the least risky. It's much more likely that challenging the status quo and asking hard questions is the path of least risk. To get there, though, will require new thinking. New commissioners would bring fresh ideas and viewpoints to the board. Last month, Commissioner Ken Ross said there's been a reticence on the part of the board to commit itself to specific and aggressive goals in terms of clean energy. We have been loath to set specific goals. I believe we should strive towards 100% renewables. I couldn't agree more with Commissioner Ross. And I strongly urge you to reject these two reappointments and request that the mayor bring forward well-qualified individuals with science, public health, or environmental backgrounds who can work with Commissioner Ross to bring about the changes at BWL that will meet the multifaceted public health crisis now upon us. It is not the case that there is a dearth of people willing to serve on the BWL board. Several candidates have sent in nomination forms. I urge you to reject these two reappointments and ask the mayor for new appointments from the available pool. We need change now. Please vote no on these reappointments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dykhouse. Sorry about mispronouncing your last name.
Everybody gets it wrong.
Next up, we'll have Loretta Stanaway, followed by Elaine Fishoff. And again, a reminder, we have Elaine Fishoff and Clyde Carnegie with their hands up. Anyone wishing to address the council must be, have your hand raised by the time Loretta Stanaway finishes speaking. So Loretta, it's, the floor is now yours and the bar will be set by the end of your speech.
Well, I'm sorry to say it's going to be extremely short, so for the sake of those who want to register, please get your hands up quickly. I second everything the first speaker said. I was going to make many of the same points myself. Again, there's nothing negative to be said about either of the two appointed candidates who have served for many years. But they have served for many years, and I do think it is time for new thinking, new blood, new faces, new concepts. And I would again second the first speaker's request that the mayor pull these nominations and make new ones. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stanaway. Next up, we have Elaine Fishoff, followed by Clyde Carnegie. And Mr. Carnegie, Dr. Carnegie, if you are wanting to address your appointment, we'll do that later, but if you want to do public comment, you certainly within your right. Elaine Fishoff for three minutes. Elaine, if you're there, you can unmute yourself.
I saw the space, I saw the space bar. I didn't, Elaine Fishoff, 2536 Windbreak Lane, Lansing, 48910 Ward 2. I'm here to echo Randy Dykhouse's sentiments on the vote with respect to the Board of Water and Light Commissioners. I, it is time for somebody new to hold those positions and look into our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, next we have Clyde Carnegie and someone just identified as Nicole. Nicole will be the last speaker. Clyde Carnegie, you are now able to unmute yourself if you want to speak for public comment.
Mr. President, I'll speak later when called upon. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, our final speaker will be someone named Nicole. And if you want to identify yourself for the record, please do so, but you are under no obligation to do so.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Nicole Byber. I am actually living in East Lansing, Michigan, 4823. I did live in Lansing for a good many years. But we do actually over here in East Lansing, we are dependent on the Board of Water and Light. And even though we do not get voting privileges of those on the board, I will let you know I am not alone. And also saying, the last thing we need to be investing in is more fossil fuels. I work with children every day. I'm a mother of three. I have from first grade to teenager. And we need to have some clear thinking here about where we are at in terms of our energy usage and what it's doing to this planet. I understand for, for my oldest is 19, for at least 19 years, I wished it wouldn't be what it is of the disastrous effects of burning fossil fuels. But it is, this is where we're at. We're very lucky here in Michigan. It's still beautiful weather. There's places where they're suffering. There's places where it's not going to get better. And it's certainly not going to get better if we don't have forward thinking. I'm sure the commissioners that are up for reappointment, perhaps they're very nice people. I don't know them personally. But I do know that if we are not invested in a moral way to look at alternatives that are there, there's expertise. We have what we need to go forward in a new direction. What we are lacking is leadership with the will to do so. You have this chance to say, we need fresh voices. We need people who will look it in the eye that we need to move on from fossil fuels and see the real alternatives and know that's a net benefit. Please look at other people for these new commissioner positions. Again, I'm in East Lansing, and we are also dependent on the Board of Water and Light.
Thank you very much. That concludes those wishing to speak for public comment. Thank you for addressing council, the committee this evening. Next up, I'm going to ask Dr. Steve Robinson to turn his camera on and welcome him. He is the new president of the Lansing Community College. And now the opportunity to meet with him, his office reached out and asked if we could address if he would, if we would like him to come say hi to the city council or the committee, the whole. So we have him here this evening with us to, he's going to have a little bit to say, and I imagine answer some questions, but I told him it'd be an easy meeting. So, you know, without, without too many flashbacks to his service in local government, I want to welcome to the committee of the whole, Dr. Steve Robinson.
Well, thank you, President Spatafor, and members of council. It's really great to be here with you this evening. And no, I actually, I was reminiscing about my days on, on city council many years ago in Grand Blank, Michigan. Much smaller municipality, but the public comment part of your meeting really important. And I'm really happy that you've invited me here to spend some time to introduce myself, and I'll be brief with that. So my name is Steve Robinson. I'm the proud new seventh president of Lansing Community College. And for me, this has been very much like coming home. I started at LCC as an intern teaching freshman composition. And I've had a near 30-year career in community colleges. For 23 years, I was down the road at Mott Community College in Flint, Michigan, where I taught and then was an administrator. And it was during that time that I spent time on city council in the city of Grand Blank. I was a city council member for six years. And so I really have a lot of respect for what you're doing and the service that you give to the community. I've also gotten a healthy understanding in the last three weeks of the great role that LCC plays in the city of Lansing. And it's great to be back because this is a really important time in our city's history. And the region, I think, will really depend on the success of Lansing Community College as we go forward. We're really at the crossroads of a couple of major disruptions in our society. There's an obvious public health disruption caused by the pandemic. And I would like to give you a little bit of an update on what Lansing Community College is doing with that. We've taken a very conservative approach to the fall semester. We are primarily online with hands-on instruction and technical and health careers happening with PPE and social distancing. And I would take our people-first, equity-minded approach to restarting learning and put it up against any higher education institution in the country. We really have a very forward-thinking approach to restarting the classroom activities here at LCC, and that's a testament to the great people, great faculty we have here. So we know that when we come out of this, this public health crisis, the region is going to need us for retraining and economic development and affordable pathways to college degrees, college degrees, and family sustaining wages. But the other major disruption we have is one caused by systemic racism. And, and we at the college are doing a lot to address that, and I want to tell you a couple of things about it. First, we have longstanding efforts through our office of diversity, equity, and inclusion to engage our campus community on many of the important issues that, that we see running through the culture of our country at this moment. But there's an increased urgency now, and our, and our Board of Trustees passed an excellent resolution on, on racial injustice that is built into it, action. We are going to be taking specific actions through an equity action plan. And I'm really excited about the way the board has framed this and the way our, our LCC people have, have, have taken on some very courageous work that needs to be done in our community. And I would just end by saying that I am very proud to now be, once again, a resident of the city of Lansing and moving my family to this great community. I've been out of the community for a long time, but I will tell you that for the first five years of my career at Mott Community College, I actually commuted from Lansing to Flint until my role in Flint required that I reside in the community. Because those are my values, our family values is that, you know, we live and reside in the communities that we serve, and, and I'm really looking forward to it. So this is day one of week four for me. And I wanted out of respect to council to come and introduce myself and let you know that the great relationships you've had with my colleagues here at LCC are continuing. Our commitment to this community is permanent. And with that, I would end my remarks and entertain any questions. I'm very read into where we are right now as a college at this moment in time and really looking forward to working with all of you on the shared collective success of our city and our region. So thanks for having me this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. I do have, it looks like, well, Patricia, your hand went down, so I don't know if you still had that, had a question for the president or not. I do want to say.
I, I, no, because he kind of addressed some of the stuff, you know, the, the, what we're, you know, what the city's doing and what the council's doing is we're just, you know, as we're talking about diversity and equity. And so I was really pleased that, you know, LCC is also doing that. I wanted to welcome him as a, an alumni of LCC. I'm so glad that you're there and go Stars.
Go Stars. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, okay, are there other, President, President Wood, Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor. I too want to welcome you as part of the Lansing community again. I think one of the questions that I have is there's been a commitment over the years for LCC to work and engage the neighborhoods in and around the campus to make sure that part of their strategic plan and the things that they're doing also enhances what's happening in the neighborhoods. And so I'd like to get your philosophy on that. We know recently that I think both funding as well as some concerns from neighbors, you, there were some changes made to some parking issues that were going to happen on the campus. But I'd like to hear a little bit more about how you want to try to engage the community.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Wood. And I, I'm sure you're all very aware, and I had a conversation with Council President about the activity and dialogue surrounding parking prior to my arrival. I followed that, by the way, through the media when I was in Toledo. What I'm about to say in big picture answer to your question is going to sound corny, but it really is true. Lansing Community College has a middle name, and the middle name is community. It's one of the reasons that I, I sought to come to this community college because I think its identity as a community college is permanent. We were founded before the Michigan Community College Act passed the Michigan Legislature. So I think this is an indelible part of who we are is serving communities, and to me, that means neighborhoods. I was not part of our previous strategic planning. In my review of it, my understanding is that effort to serve the community was part of that process. But I can tell you, one of my favorite things in crafting vision for the future of a community college is getting to learn the, the different geographic regions that the community serves. And of course, Lansing's, Lansing Community College's service district is larger than the city of Lansing. Extends, you know, beyond even the county jurisdictions. But understanding the, the regional nature that work in the neighborhoods within the city is really important. It's something I'm personally committed to doing as I move to the community. One of the fun ways I want to do this is I've, I'm an active social media user, but I've never really been on Instagram. And one of the things I'm trying to do as I move around the community is, is show people where I am. I really want to fully participate as a, as a member of this community by visiting all our neighborhoods and, and patronizing businesses in all our neighborhoods. I guess the last thing I would say is as we move forward, we will need to refresh the LCC strategic plan. The document we have now is comprehensive and good. But my approach to this has been very grassroots. Just as a little anecdote, when I led the strategic planning effort at my previous community college, we had 26 external community events, and we carefully set those mostly in community rooms and local libraries. Sometimes at a city council chamber, sometimes at a BFW hall, but mostly in community spaces of public libraries with a very neighborhood approach. In my view, those are the roots that feed up to the tree trunk for a good strategic plan. My assessment is that's been done pretty well here at LCC. When I'm, when I'm talking to folks, they, they seem to think that the college is very responsive. But that's my general approach, Congressmember Wood. I hope that, I hope that addresses your question.
It does. One of the plans that, that you, that LCC had back in 2000, 2001, that Dave Hollister, Mayor Hollister and I worked on was, there was a grant that was given to faculty that would live in the downtown area. And it was a $5,000 grant that was forgivable each year by $1,000. And if they moved during that period of time, then they had to pay back the grant. I'd be interested as to where that is nowadays, whether it's still being utilized, how many faculty have used that, and whether that's something you look at continuing or not continuing.
This is not a dodge. I will have to look into that. I am familiar that time period. And but, by the way, every community college I've worked at has worked on and struggled with this issue of making, of encouraging faculty and staff to live within the service district. It's always, it's a difficult thing to work in a public, as a public employer. But I made a note of it, and actually, our vice president for external affairs and K-12 operations, Dr. Tony Glasgow's on the call and helping me take some notes, and we can look into the current status of that. And it makes me feel really old to think that that was about 20 years ago, because I remember that time period, and I remember Mayor Hollister, so.
I appreciate you looking into it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Spatafor.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Any further questions for President Robinson? All right. Well, I only like having one president on and any particular meeting for very too long, so it's probably time to say our goodbyes. But before we do that, Dr. Glasgow, welcome. I want to thank you for all the work you do at LCC. If there's anything you want to say to the committee, please feel free. Otherwise, thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you very much, President Spatafor. And as you know, we've had a long history of working together in various capacities, and I always appreciate your support as well as everyone else's support. Councilperson Spitzley and I do quite a bit of work together, and I was in councilperson Carol Woods' ward for. And I was in councilperson Carol Woods' ward for a lot of years and always appreciated the, the fine work. We're, we're excited and we are looking forward to, um, our next chapter, um, in the capable hands of Dr. Robinson. And, um, I, I appreciate hearing the voices of Larry Leatherwood and Dr. Carnegie, two individuals that I've known, um, since 1968. So love city of Lansing. We're doing great work and I look forward to doing more work together. Thank you.
Dr. Glasgow, thank you. Dr. Robinson, very, thank you very much for your time this evening. Uh, thanks for, uh, spending a little bit of the evening with the city council today.
It was wonderful. I appreciate the invitation. Thank you for, uh, recognizing Dr. Glasgow. And we will continue to be a great partner with the city. And, uh, I, I appreciate the time this evening.
Thank you. All right. Uh, thank you all very much. Um, let's move on to our agenda and let me find it on my screen. All right. Uh, the first item in front of us is a ordinance modification to the membership of the employee retirement system, board of trustees. Um, and if you recall, this was something that we've talked about a couple of times, adding to the, um, roster of the board of trustees for the ERS, a resident of the city of Lansing who is not presently eligible to receive benefits payable by the retirement system. Um, council member Wood, to your question, you had asked that we run this by ERS for their support, um, and that board unanimously supported this change to the ordinance. So, uh, we do have before us this ordinance change. Um, if we are ready to make the motion, I will, um, move to council member Hussein.
Sure. I would move the ordinance from modifications to membership of the ERS system board of trustees.
Thank you, Vice President Hussein. Uh, is there any questions or discussion about this item? Seeing none, um, I would ask that the clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar? Is she?
There we go.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Eight zero. That'll be on the agenda for this evening, uh, at council. The next item is the appointment of Mr. Larry Leatherwood as a at-large member on the Lansing Entertainment and Public Facilities Authority Board with a term to expire on June 23rd, uh, June 30th, 2023. And let me get Mr. Leatherwood into the meeting here as a participant. There you are. Mr. Leatherwood, you may unmute yourself if you wish to address us, but, um, this resolution has been put forward by the mayor's office, um, for the, uh, LEPFA. This is a reappointment. He currently serves on the board. Um, Mr. Leatherwood, if you want to address, there you are. Anything you'd like to say, Mr. Leatherwood?
Yes. Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. President. Uh, frankly speaking, I'm not sure what my comments was to be or what my role was to be at this meeting, but I appreciate this opportunity to say hello to all the council members and so on. As the record will show, I have been on the, uh, LEPFA board now for over two years and it's been a wonderful, wonderful experience. But as you can appreciate, we have really experienced some challenges during the pandemic, uh, in terms of our operation, uh, other various aspects of, of, of LEPFA. I do would like to ask if I might, Mr. President, this is probably atypical, but just for a moment, have a solid for our board member who we all know, who just passed away, James Butler. So could we have a moment of silence just for him?
Absolutely. Counsel, would you please observe a moment of silence for, uh, Mr. Butler?
Thank you. I appreciate that. As you all know, Mr. Butler has been very active in our community, has been vast contributions to many, many areas, et cetera. As I said, I was not aware of what my role was to be tonight, other than to be present. Uh, I'm assuming that you may have, uh, some questions which I would be pleased to, to respond to. But let me also make a comment by saying that LEPFA has had wonderful leadership under the auspices of President Scott Keith. He has done a wonderful job and particularly challenging one now with the pandemic and its effect on, on our various operations. I don't have, uh, anything else of particular, you know, to offer other than being willing to respond to any questions that you may have. Many, you know me, I have been in the community for many, many years. I have served on many boards and commissions and, and served, and done a lot of things in the community. So if you have any questions regarding my background, I'd be glad to respond to that. If you got any questions about, just questions in general about who and what I am, I'd be glad to respond to that.
Thank you, Mr. Leatherwood. Does the council have questions for Mr. Leatherwood? I will say that, uh, the LEPFA board did not receive training in FOIA or open meetings, council member Wood. So if that's your question, we'll just move on from there. All right. Good deal. Uh, doesn't look like there are any questions here. So, uh, Vice President Hussein, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Yeah, I would move the resolution of Larry Leatherwood, uh, reappointment as an at-large member, uh, to the LEPFA board. This would be for a term to expire June 30th, 2023.
Thank you. Uh, seeing no further discussion, if the clerk, clerk would please call the roll.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Mr. Leatherwood, thank you very much. The council will formally adopt this this evening at our regular meeting. You do not need to be in attendance. Um, and then anytime after tomorrow, after this evening, you can arrange an appointment with Clerk Swope to be sworn in for your, your next term on the, on the LEPFA board. Thank you for being here this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Bye bye. All right. The next item on our agenda is a resolution reappointing Dr. Clark Carnegie as a fourth ward, board of police commissioner with a term to expire June 30th, 2024. And let me find Dr. Carnegie. He is moving into the panelist role here. So just give us just a moment. There he is. Dr. Carnegie, uh, you may unmute or your mic and turn on your camera if you wish. Um, but if you typically will give you just a few minute, a minute or two to introduce yourself. May, I'm sure a stranger to no one on this body, but, uh, introduce yourself and, um, share perhaps your interest, your, uh, experience on the police board of commissioners and, and, uh, then we can open it up to questions from council. Thank you, Dr. Carnegie.
Thank you, President Spatafor, and good evening to the council members. Uh, I have considered it indeed an honor to serve the citizens of Lansing in this capacity as police commissioner. My passion for Lansing is very, very deep. I love the city and I love all of the wonderful opportunity it provides our citizens. My background probably could be summed up as loving to serve. My interest is not self, but to serve this wonderful community. Uh, it has been a joy to work with persons, uh, who have made tremendous contributions to our city. And to grow in understanding the importance of working together to help Lansing become the very best community for persons to reside. Uh, with that said, if there are any questions, uh, that members of the council would like to direct towards me, that'd be fine. And I want to thank you, uh, President Spatafor for the opportunity to speak and to come before the board.
Thank you, Dr. Carnegie, very much. Um, we have so far one hand up from council member Betts. Councilmember Betts?
Dr. Carnegie, thank you for your service thus far and for coming before council today for us to, uh, consider your reappointment. I do have a couple of questions, uh, for you. The first is that numerous data sources have shown that the police racially target, uh, and arrest black citizens include i- in the city, including a disproportionate amount of black youth. What have you personally done on the police board of commissioners to curb racism in the police department? And how do you plan to change your approach given the desire of our community to reinvent, to reinvent public safety?
The operation of the department requires a great deal of understanding and cooperation with everyone being a part of the commission. Uh, my role has been to seek to understand measures that comply here recently with, uh, let me share it with you. The Obama administration's task force, 21st century policing and all the elements that are a part of that. That was moving us in a very positive direction and I wholeheartedly supported. I'll say it again. I wholeheartedly supported those elements of the Obama task force that was moving our city in the right direction. I would say, this, uh, councilperson, that, that this was being embraced by not only the department, but the citizens of Lansing. I saw somewhat of a departure from, um, this initiative. And I am extremely, extremely excited about our chiefs moving in this direction. The most positive piece of it being that we would be able to have a dialogue that would include everyone. I have a concern about anything that does not. I see it as a model that can put Lansing even further ahead in seeking to address most pressing problems in our city. By that, I worked to encourage the department to adhere to these policies because they have a strong community impact. I think having a structure that everyone can become a part of the dialogue positively. And even when it breaks down, it provides a pathway for us to gain our direction again and move forward. I have done everything I possibly can do and would like to do more in stressing the importance of the key issues that not only impact our country, but our city. As I said earlier, I have grown learning the importance of community dialogue and community service. I plan to do that even more because we're at the crossroads of some very difficult issues to try and manage. I say it's difficult because we must have operations and we must embrace change. And that requires a great deal of understanding, understanding of our past, our current situation, and what we want to see in my estimation, my children, my grandchildren and great grandchildren have that this great city can afford. It is a moment and it's going to take discussion, but it's not the final step in the history of this city. It will require people who have invested themselves to serve, are willing to serve, be a part of the dialogue and the solution to our issues. I think the most interesting thing that stands in my mind is to build towards a more perfect union. Even what we're trying to do right now is a step towards a more perfect union. And I keep that in front of me because we sometimes think we have the final solution and we do not. But I think everyone's contribution, particularly if it has been beneficial to the community, can help us reach that dynamic goal that have made us, I feel again, a great city in finding what other elements needed in our city operations to help us reach that tremendous goal of a more perfect union that involves everyone, that people feel a part of it, that people feel it protects them, it allows them to be a part of what is going on in the city, that their voices are being heard and that every citizen counts. Every citizen's voice counts. Every joy and hurt that is experienced by our citizens must be looked at and that no one should be turned away and that we should be fully transparent and be responsible for our transparency. I don't want to take a lot of time, but I think I have tried to be fully transparent as we've talked with various groups in the city who have come with questions. It just didn't happen yesterday. We have looked at questions many, many times. And I think if citizens really felt disenfranchised, issues would have come before us a long time ago. It does not mean that the emerging issues are not to be addressed. They are. But I think the greatest thing I bring to it is my passion for the city, my concern for transparency. I boil it down to simply telling the truth. I'm not a person that likes to play games. I'm not into that. I like to look at an issue head on and say what I believe. And so this is where I find myself, uh, with this reappointment and I'm looking forward to serving. I, I feel I have the respect of all citizens in this community. I've worked very, very hard and I'm just proud of that. And I think they view me as a person who loves everyone. God bless you. Did I, did I do anything to address your question?
Yeah, yeah, you did. I, I actually have a, a few more questions as well. Thank you for your first answer to that. I guess, I guess building off of what you said, you said that there are certain problems in the police department that we need to address. What are those problems and how are you in this role going to ensure that we address those problems?
Well, we have done a great, when I say we, the commission has done a great deal of work in understanding our input into the hiring process. We seek to get the very best that we can find, uh, develop the task force to work with human resources, to identify persons with a criteria that really answers many of the issues that we're trying to deal with today. For example, it's important to understand that if an officer is coming to the finance in the city, what's their background? Uh, that takes coordination with. That takes coordination with personnel, department, Community Resources, everyone looking into that. By that, I mean, we know that there are cases in this country where officers have slipped under the radar, gone from one department to another. We've worked very hard to set up criteria to make sure that we're getting the very best of the best. When that occurs, then the whole training component becomes more realistic. We're in a training to meet new demands, new ideas, new ways of seeking to protect the community, to train our officers, and to understand how to utilize what resources we are given. We have to understand that the department does not generate its budget. The department does not generate its budget. That is from the general fund. And how those items are going to come to the department, then expertise will have to be lent to how do we maintain the finest of the finest in this state? And so it's going to take, as I said, understanding. It's going to take dialogue. It's going to take being able to speak with one another. It cannot be a contentious situation. And how do we seek the very best in reaching the unity that we are expecting to reach in this country? And so you have to have some experience, have to have some background and understanding and love and compassion for everybody that you're working with. It's a very interesting situation to be in. I'm looking forward to the challenge. There are other items, sir, that we should look at in terms of recruitment. We have to take a look at past records. We have to look at the complaint system. How is it? How well is it working? Do people feel disenfranchised? We're holding meetings now. We're getting ready to hold our third meeting to hear from citizens as to how they feel about the department and just hear their expressions. This is nothing new. We do this once a month. The investigator for the department has, Mr. Bradley, has done a great job. But we're now in a situation of reorganizing and understanding how to best meet the needs of the people. I think if people felt disenfranchised from having an opportunity to speak, they would be clamoring at City Council. We've worked very, very hard in the community and in the cultures of the community to make sure that folks have an opportunity to voice their complaints and get a reasonable answer and to try to find a solution if one is needed. We've been open to research through Michigan State University to understand policing in this city. That data is very, very important. It's important because it was embraced by the department. It was embraced by the community. We had community meetings, and people had an opportunity to see whether or not there are great disparities. There will always be disparities, but we can improve upon them and we can make our city even better. Again, I fall back on the whole idea of creating a more perfect community right here in our city. Now, there are internal issues such as internal affairs within the department. It's very important that the commission takes a good look, along with the department, as to how we can better improve transparency in the disposition of issues. And I think that's what people want. They want transparency in all aspects of the department. They don't want to be shut out, or they don't want to be pushed aside. They want a straight answer. I plan to bring, if reappointed, to the commission. And I'm not here to discuss its structure, but to say and make a commitment to the citizens of Lansing. In the event there becomes an issue so grave that we must have complete transparency in the way it is handled and its disposition, I want to be the first to say this is what we do. Not for my sake, not for the commission's sake, for the sake of the city, for the sake of the persons that we're serving. My constituency is the Fourth Ward, but I feel that I am a servant to the entire city. I have an opportunity now, being a senior member on the commission and taking a look at its emerging new organization, and say this again, emerging new organization that take a key role in simply saying, "This is the best for our city." How that might affect persons, that's part of the process. But it's got to be embraced by everyone. No one can be pushed aside. No one could be made felt that their input is not important. I think there's been enough history in this city to know that people who are working on all boards and commissions are dedicated people. So I don't know, Mr. Betts, there are things that we could talk about more. But yes, I have an agenda, and I recognize that hiring, we have to review that again. The documentation that officers bring, we got to take a look at that, make sure something hasn't come under the radar. We have to take a look at community segments. We basically meet at City Hall, but we got to move out into the areas and hear more how our citizens are talking with us. And so one of the points that I will make to the commission as we reorganize, we have to move from City Hall meetings to our community center meetings, Guyer Park, Rio. We have to go to all of these areas and make sure that folks are speaking, are talking, and helping us make decisions and policies. Our policy review committee, we have to go and review the entire manual of procedures on policies. They're kind of old, but we have a chief who's willing to understand and recognize that, bring them into the moment and what we're facing. Policies and procedures, and the manual procedure is very serious. And I would say that many of us are not familiar with it. My interest is to take a more forward approach to understanding this and understanding internal affairs. There's got to be some changes because our format heretofore does not really address the individual. And we've got to get to the individuals in our community. When they feel they're on board, when they feel they're being heard, when they feel they're being recognized, when they feel that the people who have been given the responsibility to serve them is serving them, Lansing will move forward. We will be the community we've always been, and we will endure. But it's going to take some very hard-nosed questions. And I say, when those questions come from people who've already demonstrated their love for the city, or someone who recognizes the importance of working together, we can do it. I'm, look at America today in dismay and saying, "There's a lot of work to be done in our country, and there's a lot of work to be done in our city, but we have resources, and we have persons who have demonstrated a great deal of commitment to Lansing. And because of that, I feel hopeful. I respect everyone's input." And I walked downtown today with one of my granddaughters, and I had a feeling of, "What a wonderful, wonderful city we live in." And that's what I want to have happen as I go to the commission now as a senior member and work towards transparency, openness, addressing the issues, understanding the mechanism of internal affairs, hiring, taking a good look at our force, and working within the parameters that we work with. As I said before, the department does not generate its budget. The budget is generated by the city. And how that is given to us, then we have to take a look at how do we maintain the excellence that this city is used to? I won't say "take for granted," but I say "is used to." And that's a big job. Can't be done overnight. It's got to be done over time. And I feel I have time to do that, be a part of it, and I want to feel good about it, not for myself, but for my children, my grandchildren, great-grandchildren, so that I can see what's happened. Members on this board and on other boards and on this committee, they came back to Lansing after they did their post-grad work. Many cities have had difficulty because of the people moving from one place to another. Our people, our Lansing people, come back and give. They graduate from high school. They've had a great experience with diversity. Our high schools are very diverse. Our communities are very diverse. And when they get their professional expertise, they come back to Lansing and give and work. What is happening at the moment can be managed by, not outside people, they're okay, but people of Lansing who grew up here and have put roots into this city and want to make it a great city. So I'm impressed with city council members, people all over this community who have come back and said, "I want to give back to a community that nurtured me to be the person, along with my parents, I've grown to be." That's a valuable, valuable asset, and I hope Lansing doesn't overlook that because we have many people who have come back to make a difference. God bless you. Is that helpful, Mr. Betts?
Yeah, thank you for answering my questions, Dr. Carnegie. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
So we have a few more questions, and we also have five more appointments and a closed session to get through. So I just want to remind folks of that. I'm not trying to rush you, just contextualizing the moment and history that we occupy right now as a committee. Councilmember Jackson, you're up next, followed by Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Carnegie, how are you doing, sir? I know that you're muted right now, but, you know, I just appreciate you being on here as my former principal at Sexton High School until you graduated, or until you retired, excuse me, about 2003, which was my senior year. So you might have been done '02, '03, right around there. And then it looks like you went to the police boards in 2004, amongst other things. I know that you're a pastor. I know that you are an academic. I mean, you have Dr. Clyde Carnegie. So, you know, I appreciate that, and I know you as a person, and you're a wonderful person, and clearly very knowledgeable. But I'm in a tight position right now, and that's because I represent a constituency. And you're a Fourth Ward guy. I recall Michigan Avenue. I'm not going to say where, but, you know, you have a nice house there. I recall talking to you several times, and I appreciate you. So there's still a few things that's concerning, and one is just kind of like the overall trend for the call for change and kind of like fresh, new ideas. You recited a lot of different things that sound like good projects that are up and coming. But my only concern is that, like, you know, you've been there since 2004, done a lot of great work, but as a person that's kind of interested in police reform generally, I just don't know, like, what are the things that happen. So you, councilperson Betts, has some great questions, so I'm not going to ask too many because I think I'm going to have another chance to speak at Committee of the Whole as well. But basically, some of the things that I'm concerned about are internal affairs, which you said. But the thing is, that's been going on for so long where people can't really, you said that, given the right circumstance, there will be complete transparency. And I was just worried when I heard that, like, it would require something like George Floyd or something, God forbid, that bad or something like that for you to be pushing full transparency. For me and a lot of people, there should be, like, more of that upfront. So that's just one thing I'm concerned about. And also, so there's the complaint process you mentioned, and I might have my stats wrong, but basically, the commission agreed with the findings, like, on a very high percentage of time. So, I don't know. It just seems like the thought diversity inside of the commission, and I don't know where you stand. I haven't, unfortunately, I haven't been to too many meetings. I don't know if you're the one pushing for the newest things, but it's just, I think there needs to be a little bit of, you know, where are the police reform people at as part of the commission, as part of the 12? I'm not saying it's the right thing or the wrong thing, but as far as, like, somebody there representing that, that's kind of what I'm wondering about. So if I had, if you would indulge me on, like, short answers, instead of just, like, you know, voting yes or no, I'm sure you're going to make it, but I just don't know if I'm going to vote for you. And, you know, I know you know it's not personal, but the questions I would have, since it's kind of a vetting, would be, "What's your position on the Black Lives Matter demands and the conversation about reallocating some of the police budget towards, like, groups and towards programs that's designed to target, you know, some of the youth that have need?" So that would be a question, and you already talked about a few other ones, including the complaint process that you want to see done. But I'll just ask, I guess, that, oh, and also about your position as far as, like, the percentage. You mentioned general fund, and the police budget is very tight, but it's very high. It's a very high percentage of the city overall, and it's growing. Everything's, you know, getting worse. So just where you are on that, because it's going to take police, the commissioners, because it's not Chief Green necessarily who has the ideas. It's supposed to be the commissioner, so I just wonder where you're at. Thank you.
Well, right now, the commission consists of eight commissioners. There are vacancies, yet you're aware of. And the vacancies have come from very key people. They're gone. There's going to have to be a reorganization of understanding how to carry out what's expressed in the city charter and what is being expressed with the community right now. Now, when we talk about the budget, 60% or even more of the department's budget is on personnel. We know that. We know that there is disparities in overtime, a personnel issue. What has to be redirected for the department is to understand over time, a reduction, how to carry out the mission of the department. Right now, all of the conversation is defunding. That's the conversation, department of people. But in order to fully understand how to do all of this, there's got to be some understanding in the entire budget. Are there areas that need to be redirected to providing more community programs, more opportunities for counselors, people to find ways to help people reach services? In other words, the human side of the governmental enterprise has got to change. And that change can be brought about in a way that we have an organization in Lansing to do that. Folks are saying defunding the police can bring about justice, just as plain as that. But we know that when people have an opportunity to employment, when they have an opportunity to help, when they have an opportunity to bear housing, when they have an opportunity to defer treatment, when they go to interview for a job, when they have an opportunity when they go to interview for a job, when they have an opportunity to be of an ethnic group in an organization and be treated fairly, no matter what that organization is, there's gotta be a redirecting of thinking. It's not a training, it's not something that is trainable, it's something that's doable. And it has to be brought to the front. I'm a person, when I was at Sexton High School, there were a lot of things that had to be changed. And I was upfront about it, it didn't make me any difference, it's gotta be done. Well, this is where we are with policing. There are a number of issues that have to be addressed. And they can be done in such a way that we all can feel this is the best for the city of Lansing. Now, whether a person votes for me or not, or all that, I understand. And I'm going to make a contribution wherever and whenever I can. If it's not on the commission, then it might be in another arena. But I am committed to that. But I think the budget, personnel concerns, internal affairs, this is a growing. Now Lansing, in 1960, when I came here, has changed. Change just didn't come yesterday. Change has come a long way, and I have seen a, a big change in the way white, black, brown, red people get together and have made a contribution in this city. We enjoy, to some extent, what a lot of people worked for in the 50s and 60s, when a lot of cities didn't do that. So we have the wherewithal. I think it's a matter of understanding what are going to be the priorities. And Black Lives Matter, obviously, in our city, folks have had difficulties in employment. They've had difficulties in housing. When I came here, it was very difficult to even find a place to live in Lansing. People would say, I can't rent to you. And a lot of people worked very hard to open that up. We had to desegregate our schools, and that was a big challenge. And our schools are desegregated, our kids are receiving an excellent education. And so that experience I bring with me, take a look at these challenging questions. And like I say, we just didn't get to this today, we've been working on it for a long time. A lot of people have, are dead and gone, what they have done. But I can assure you that there's not going to be a stone unturned with our reorganization. As I said, we've got three people that have left. And we haven't had a real opportunity to have an orientation. And so we have some internal work to do as a commission. And I hope to be now a senior member onboard to do that. I'm concerned that if we neglect the issues that folks are talking about, and it's gonna be pretty tough. But Black Lives Matters is right in front of us, and they do matter. Red Lives Matter, they've had a very difficult time. I'm very much a part of the Native American community. Brown Lives, it's been tough. And they have organized and have done a tremendous job for this city. And so for me, everyone matters. We have Black Lives Matter in front of us right now. And sure enough, there are disparities. The jails are overrun with African-American males, why? We have mothers can't feed their children right now, why? We have homelessness on the streets of Lansing that should not be, that we have to address. We have health disparities with the pandemic. Folks haven't had equal access to health opportunities. And the list goes on. And when you say Black Lives Matter, that's what I'm talking about. And when children are being suspended from school and families need help. And if the, if it's disproportionately black or Hispanic or whatever, that needs to be addressed. And if folks are fired from jobs unnecessarily, moved for whatever reasons, that needs to be addressed. So it's a big, it's a big problem, it's comprehensive. But within the department, there are specific issues we need to address. And so I hope I've given you my impression of Black Lives Matter. We went by it again today, and I hope I've answered your question.
Thank you. I see Councilmember Jackson's hand has gone down, Dr. Carnegie, so we'll move on to Councilmember.
Did I answer your question, Mr. Jackson?
Yes, mostly. I'm gonna vote yes out of committee of the whole, and I gotta think about everything coming up at the next meeting. But my hope is, is that if you do get on, you will be the leader that's bringing about all these changes about the complaint process, transparency. And you're gonna be the senior leader standing up, making all the noise about making it happen. So I'm kind of weighing those, but I think.
Well, I think you're gonna be pleasantly surprised as the education you got at Sexton High School. But I would like to come before city council and just talk about it one evening and let you know what's going on. It's gonna be quite different.
Thank you, Dr. Carnegie. Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spadeford. It's good to see you, Dr. Carnegie, and have the opportunity to talk with you. We go way back over the years from your educational background and the things you've done for that, as well as your pastoral, having been in your church numerous times and listened to you preach. A couple of really quick questions I have for you. I see that for the last 23 years, you have been a chaplain for the Lansing Police Department. Are you still a chaplain, along with your role as a commissioner?
Well, I'm waiting, Councilperson Wood, for chaplain emeritus. I have, at a time when you couldn't get a black pastor to pastor the, the police department. You know how sad, you could not get in the city, a black pastor to pastor the police department. Chief Gleason, a good friend of mine, he's passed. I had a talk with me, and I was the first black pastor to chaplain the Lansing Police Department. And I'm the only pastor to chaplain both the police department and the fire department when their chaplain had a heart attack. And I gained a lot of weight because the best food in town is from your firehouses, there are the best cooks in town. But I had to chaplain white, black, brown, red, everybody. I had to chaplain these folks in the hospital, funerals, in the city. We have citizens who can't have a pastor, and the chaplain has to go and provide a funeral service for the family. That's happened on many occasions. Most people don't know much about it. But it's been a service, I feel it's a calling from God. And I continue to be, I say chaplain emeritus because I got a lot of young ones now. And I kind of work in an advisory role.
My next question and, and my last question is, what committees have you served on? On your role as a police commissioner? I know there's finance and complaints and promotions. Can you, can you tell us what committees you've served on?
The majority of my time, Councilmember Wood, has been with budget. Three years ago, or I'd say two years ago, there was not a format for understanding the procedure for departmental budget. And I worked on that, I brought it before the commission. We adopted that under Chief Yankowski. And to tell you the truth, the process starts in September. It begins in September, and it is a step-by-step format that ensures that we will have a budget before the mayor and city council at the appropriate time. We've never had that before. What I'm looking at is, wait a minute, what about the other committees? Government committee, that's gotta change because there's another role we're gonna have to play in being articulate with our communities, not at city hall, but out in the communities.
Right.
What about, so there's a number of things that we have to do, but my interest was primarily budget and making sure that we worked within those parameters we were given and that they were done on time. Now I plan to be able to move in a far greater capacity.
Thank you very much, Dr. Carnegie. I appreciate it. I appreciate your service.
Yeah. I can't hear. I can't hear. I can't hear.
I can't hear you, Peter.
Peter, you're on mute.
So it's me that's causing the problem this time? So Councilmember Dunbar, you're up next. I apologize, everybody. Well, now it's Kathy, it's not me.
She's on mute as well.
Yeah, I see that. She knows that, too. Councilmember Dunbar, I'm gonna move on to Councilmember Garz, and we'll come, oh, no.
I got it. I'm, I'm not used to doing this on my phone, so I apologize. The buttons are all in weird, different places. Okay, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Um, I would like to ask, um, I'm, I've got tough questions that probably don't need any kind of like, it's kind of like yes or no. I, I would like to know, Dr. Carnegie, that, did you support the decision that was made to use chemical agents during a protest here in Lansing? Very simple.
If we were to make that decision again today, no chemical agents. No.
Okay.
Did that answer it?
It did, it did. Can you, can you tell me, I, I get, I hear what you're saying about the, you know, we proposed the budget. Right? So the council, the mayor proposed the budget, we make alterations to it, we ultimately approve it. The police doesn't, they don't choose it. But would you be supportive of a framework where we reduce the funding for activities that are outside of what I would consider and what many consider police purview? I know that you mentioned earlier that you, it sounded to me like you were saying we should look in other areas of the city budget to find the money for social services on the backend. That's not the call that's been put out there. It is to literally reimagine the police department and take funds from the department for services that would reduce the need and, and redirect the department to more essential services. And how do you feel about that?
I feel, first of all, it is the people's money, the citizens of Lansing. And that we need to be responsible to what the people are asking. I don't feel they're demanding, I feel they're asking. And so if we have to understand a budget that underfunds the department, that's what we have. We cannot go back and say, this is what we want. We are a product of what we receive. And so if we go from 60% personnel, not to mention the other 40%, to 30% or however that is, the only thing that can be done is to say, this is the report. And whether or not it meets the mission of the department, that's one thing. But it is the mission of the city. What is the city hoping to achieve that I feel my efforts should be going to, plain and simple? I believe the people who provide the money through the general fund for our city should have a voice. And whatever that voice is, as we understand it and accept it, that's what we do. I do not see my position saying, this is what we want, or this is what we need. This is what we have, and with this in mind, this is the delivery system for the public welfare of the city. I have to look at that realistically.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm curious. I, I know it's maybe just a choice of words, but the way that it was phrased was to underfund the police department, like if we were to underfund the department. And I don't, I think what we're looking at is restructuring the.
Yeah, I, I, defunding is the national nomenclature. But it is understanding what the city budget can bear and how do we best meet that expectation? I, I don't want to use the word defunding because that's a national term. But it's basically, this is what we have to work with.
Okay, and then I'm gonna go back to one policy question, and then I'll let whoever move on. I'm, I'm curious, because I know that there was a little bit of talk in one of the answers to your earlier question about the role of the police commission and the complaints from citizens and, and policies related to that. And I'm wondering if you can give me an example of any time that there was a citizen complaint that came before the police commissioners, that, that you saw, that, that you were involved in any kind of a change in policy based on that complaint? Has that ever happened?
There's always been a minority report when decisions are made. We vote as a commission, no one's vote is any greater than anyone else's. As I've said, there's been some major changes in the structuring of the commission.
I'm not talking, I, I, I hear you, I'm not thinking of the structure of the commission. I'm thinking of, and it's an advisory board. So it's an advisory board, you give advice to the police chief. And have there ever been times when a citizen complaint rose to a level where you or any other commissioner, even for that matter, proposed and implemented changes based on a citizen complaint?
I would say no, for this reason. A citizen complaint can come before the mayor, it can come before the investigator, it, the independent investigator, it can come before the commission, it can come before the sergeant on the duty desk. A complaint can be registered in many ways. It's not just to the commission. And we would have to look at all of these. Some are handled at different levels and never come to the commission. Some are handled by internal affairs with our independent investigator that never come before the commission. That has basically been the procedure. What I'm saying, transparency in all complaints. That's the change I want to see. Now, I haven't been as vocal about that with the new members, because we don't have any new members. And I haven't been vocal about that with the one-year or two-year members. But I'm saying it now, as the senior member, these are my expectations.
I'm gonna let that hang, that I, yeah. I'm just gonna let that hang. I'm sorry, I was really, I was hoping for, like, I get that complaints can come in in any variety of different locations, you know, in the department and in the system. But I was really hoping that there would be an example of something, I would imagine it rises to a certain level if it gets to the police commission, where the commission has taken a stand, that something needed to be done or changed policy-wise, and that's, that's kind of what I was hoping for.
Yeah, well, we have a committee that is in charge of policy and procedures. We've had some vacancies now. And it's going to be, it's, it's going to be a great effort to move it in. great effort to move it in the direction I'm speaking about. It's going to take a lot of effort, but I believe it can be done. And it's going to require a total review of our policies and procedures as a department, total review.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Dunbar. Are you all set?
I'm good.
Thank you. Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President Spatafor. Uh, thank you, Dr. Carnegie, for being here, and I appreciate all the thoughtful comments from my colleagues. I guess this is more of a comment, uh, than anything. I just want to say thank you, uh, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for all you've done for our community. I too am alumni, uh, Sexton High School, nineteen ninety-four. Uh, I think, uh, you've always been a fair man and a good man. And I probably sat in your office once or twice in my time, in my tenure. So, uh, I can appreciate you and, and, uh, and I look forward to working with you, continue to work, working with you. And, and as my colleague, uh, uh, Councilman, uh, Jackson said, you know, you retired in two thousand and three. I hope it wasn't because or part of, uh, Brian Jackson's doing that you retired, just kidding, Jackson. But, uh, anyways, I look forward to working with you. Um, thanks for all you, what you do for our city and, uh, thanks for being here this, this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. The, the only thing I'm asking, uh, if reappointed is for the, uh, city council to afford me an opportunity to share what I have shared tonight, uh, in total. And I, I think I, I would love to do that and to dispel any questions about how I try to work for the city. I really would like an opportunity to come back and do that. And I'm not too concerned about the commission. I know we're going to get good people on board. Uh, we've got good people in Lansing. But I think now is the time for me to come forward, uh, with my colleagues and say, this is what we look like now. And, uh, I think you'd be pleasantly surprised.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Garza. Dr. Carnegie, I have one question for you. Um, you, you alluded to this a bit about the Police Board of Commissioners need to get out in the community a bit more. To me, you know, I'm someone who's been relatively involved in, uh, city issues for a long time, or, you know, a long time for me, um, but really had no knowledge of the Police Board of Commissioners or their meetings and those types of things. What steps would you propose in your next iteration, um, if approved as a senior member of the Police Board of Commissioners to improve accountability of the Board of Commissioners to the public as well as the opportunity for the public to participate in that process?
Right, uh, President Spatafor, our meetings primarily are confined to the second floor of City Hall. I, through the government affairs, uh, and city council members have come to a meeting at City Hall as well. You all know that. But I want to see the commissioners going out into the community centers. And, uh, we don't need to be cloistered up in City Hall for all of our meetings. We need to go to Guyer Park. We need to go to Rio. We need to go a, a, at least six times in the calendar year just to talk about what's on your mind. What can we do to do a better job? And to have dialogue. Now, we usually do it maybe twice or three times. Uh, my position is to do it more. Now, I'm not on that committee. That committee post is now open. And that's what I was trying to tell the council people. I feel I have a chance now to move thoughts that I have had in the right direction, even more than what it is.
Thank you, Dr. Carnegie. I, I appreciate that. As a charter board, you know, there, there's only, uh, so many structural changes we can make as a council, right? We can't do it through ordinance. But I would really encourage not just the committees, but the entire Police Board of Commissioners to really put themselves out there. I know I'm sort of speaking, um, sort of as a hypocrite here as city council. We sit, we sit at chambers all the time, but I think moving that Police Board of Commissioners out, um, you know, we, we certainly televise and all that type of stuff. But I think moving that, the whole Board of Commissioner meetings out into the public would do some really good for, um, opening up that, that, that body to a little bit more transparency and maybe uh, ability for the public to better understand what the board does in general. Uh, so it could serve both purposes. It could serve the board well, and it would also serve the, the interests of transparency and public accountability. So I think you've got the idea of what I'm asking here, and I appreciate your thoughts on it. Um, but I would encourage you, um, as a, if, if appointed, reappointed again as a senior member to, uh, try to drag that, um, that commission out of the second floor as often as possible, um, and out into the public so that folks can really engage, uh, with the Police Board of Commissioners. It's such important work that you all do.
Well, I can assure you that there will be a drastic change in the way communication is given to the people. Now, we're not strangers to anybody, but we need to be familiar in areas that we are not as visible as we should be to make sure there's some good dialogue going on.
Absolutely. And I'm really going to miss the, uh, the neighborhood night of action this year. Unfortunately, I don't think that's going to happen, uh, with the current situation, but that's one way. I've always seen you all very active in the community. So, thank you. Okay, I see no other questions. Uh, Jeremy, your hand is up still. Is that a residual hang? Okay, thank you. Um. With that, we need some sort of motion on the resolution. Dr. Carnegie, I thank you very much for your thorough answers to the questions and, and your time this evening. It's very much appreciated.
Well, I've been watching the meetings, uh, regularly, and I think the comments that have come to me tonight are some of the most, uh, challenging and comprehensive of all of them. But I take them with a great deal of understanding and know that this is just a microcosm of what's out there in our community. So I want to make sure that board members understand where I'm coming from and that I'm a straight-up person. So I will do everything I can to address the things that you have said, if reappointed, so that I can come back at another time and say, this is what has been done.
Well, something tells me if we do that, we'll have to have scheduled a special meeting just for your presentation, but I appreciate, uh, the offer and we will, we'll take you up on it.
That'd be all right.
Thank you. Um, Vice President Hussein.
President Spatafor, I would move the, uh, resolution for reapportment, reapportment of Dr. Claude, sorry, Clyde D. Carnegie as a fourth ward, uh, police commissioner for a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you, Vice President Hussein. Further discussion from council members before we pass, we, we vote on this. All right, um, Sherry, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Betts.
No.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
No.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Motion carries six-two.
Thank you, Dr. Carnegie. We will, um, this will go to council this evening, but you don't need to be there this evening. And if it does pass council, I was informed by the clerk that reappointments are not re sworn in, so you're just automatically reappointed unless, um, unless the vote does not pass this evening, just so you're aware. I, I, I misinform Mr. Leatherwood. So if you're, if Larry, you're still on, I apologize.
I thank you all very much for your confidence, and I will do my very best to serve the citizens of Lansing. But more than anything else, I hope to come back at a time that you feel is appropriate to show what's been going on.
Thank you, Dr. Carnegie.
Thank you.
Um, next up is a resolution to appoint Georgina Nelson as a fourth ward member of the Board of Fire Commissioners. And let me see if I can find Georgina Nelson.
I believe he just said.
I'm sorry? Oh, uh, there we are. Um. Georgina, I think you just raised your hand on the phone. Is that you?
Yes, that's me.
Very good. Um, if you want to take just a brief moment to introduce yourself, maybe discuss your work on the fire commission previously, and then, uh, we'll open it up to some questions.
Okay, thank you very much, um, to all the council members for the opportunity. It's been a while since I've been to any of the meetings, um, especially the last, uh, many months. Um, again, I go by Gina Nelson. I live at six oh five West Side Wastey. I'm in the fourth ward. I've lived in Lansing. I moved to Lansing in nineteen ninety-four. I have, I'm a retiree of the state of Michigan from the Department of Health and Human Services after thirty-nine years. I have served on the fire commission now for three years, over, just over three years. Um, I thought I knew a lot about the fire department, never wrote any fire department, and you know what? You don't. It's, it's amazing how much you learn and how much I've grown to truly love the, the people that are there, how I truly care about the staff that we have, especially with COVID, um, risking their lives every time they're out on a call. Um, currently, I, I served as vice chair, um, for one year. Um, we just had some switching around with our positions. I currently am chairing the annual report committee. Pardon?
That's some cross chatter.
Okay, I just want to be clear. Um. I've done a lot of community, heard a number of community events until recently, um, with the fire department, including Beatrice in your own town and um, other events like that, which have been, it's really eye-opening to see the great respect that the community has for um, our people that are out there. Um, and they deserve all that respect and much more. I don't know how many people would be willing, especially with COVID, to do the jobs that they're doing. Um, we've had, you know, some cases within the department of COVID. Um, luckily, they, everybody has survived. And, um, but I, I think I've only missed maybe two meetings in over three years, um, with conflicts that, in my scheduling. Um, it's something I'm just truly committed to. Um, and I really would relish the opportunity to keep serving. I also recently stood on the interview panel for the latest round of hiring in light of a lot of criticism that came out of last year. Um, with my background, I was a caseworker for the state of Michigan, but I also spent eight years in labor relations and personnel. And I also, during that time, during my time with the state, I served on the statewide diversity committee for the entire department. I chaired it for seven years. Uh, I was vice chair for about a year and a half and a committee member the rest of the time. Um, that's something I truly believe in, and especially in the light of last year's rounds of hiring, and like I said, and the public criticism, I wanted to, I wanted to see it to make sure that we hopefully did not have that issue again. You know, however, in light of budget constraints, which have been made much worse for, you know, the city, the state, I mean, everybody because of COVID, because we don't have the tax money. And we, you know, we have to look for people that are trained as much as possible, as well firefighters, you know, paramedics, you know, EMTs. Um, because we don't, it would be great, in a perfect world, it would be wonderful to have a training academy. But we're not in a perfect world, obviously, anymore. Haven't been for a long time, and I don't know when that will happen, but my goal is to make sure that we keep our hiring processes open and as transparent as possible. I know there's still some people that are not happy with it. Um, I could tell you, two, after two days of interviewing, I did, that was part of fifteen interviews. One person did not show, there were no females. We had a very diverse mixture of other people that did apply. Um, very few of them really had the training that we needed. You know, some had no training. It was kind of like, oh, I think I want to be a firefighter. Well, again, in a perfect world, you know, if we had a training academy where we could do stuff like that, it would be wonderful. It would be awesome. But we, the, the money's not there, and it's going to be a very long time before we have the money there. So because of that, that's why I wanted to stand up, to try to keep things as transparent as possible. I think Chief Mackey has been wonderful. I know he's worked very hard into making sure that we don't have issues raised like we did last year. And I know a lot, you know, the staff seemed to really appreciate that.
Thank you, um, for, very much. Um, Councilmember Spitzley, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, first of all, Georgina, thank you for your service. Um, it is, it is greatly appreciated. Um, I have a couple of questions. Um, the, the first was, um, your discussion, and, and I, I'm not quite sure if this is a, a question or a comment for you or a question or a comment for HR. But I think that the city of Lansing should have the best and the brightest. I agree. Um, but I also think that the city of Lansing should, um, do the necessary investments so that they are, um, you know, getting a diverse candidacy. Um, you know, your comment that there were some people that were, you were interviewing that did not, um, were not qualified is disturbing to me. And, and it's disturbing because I don't know how they even, how would they even, you know, uh, qualified to even come before you. It seems like that would have been filtered out through the HR process. The other thing that, um, I'd like to ask you about is the apprenticeship training. I, I, I believe, um, and, and you'll hear more about it in the future. I, I do believe that the LFD cannot, they cannot afford not to have an apprenticeship program. Um, if you look at what's happening with LPD and, and, and their, um, police corps, um, you know, how they're getting, you know, the high school kids in and teaching them about the police department, and that is absolutely the, the the garden from which they're getting their, their cadets. And so I, 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 I get budget. Um, I get budgetary issues, and I'm glad that you were on the interview panel, but I also think that that is something that I'd like you to just kind of revisit, um, as you're on the commission in the future, that there is a need for some sort of, um, apprenticeship program in, in Lansing Fire. Thank you.
Patricia, I do agree with you on that. Um, and I, I shouldn't say they, that they weren't qualified. You know, and I was trying to, I mean, there are people that I think would be, they'd be awesome, even if they didn't have the training, and I did express that in my notes, in the interview notes. The good thing is we do have people within the department. Um, and I didn't even know this until we were going through this because also the days that I interviewed were, were staff members from the department. And I was informed because they, this was never brought up before, that they actually used to have, and they want to bring back the committee to groom people that did really well in the interviews, but did not have what was needed and kind of like weren't sure where to go next to get it. They want to work with those people to get them to that point. And I, 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 I'm a huge supporter of mentorship. It's definitely needed. I, like I said, I would, I, I would love if we had, you know, the money for an academy, but you know, right now we have to look at money for PPE stuff or, you know, I mean, we, we need training and we do need the diverse staff because we live in a very diverse area. You know, the city is very diverse. And that's the great part. I mean, I grew up in the UP in a very small town. I left East Lansing to come to Lansing purposely. Um, because I wanted to live in the city. And now that's the only place I will live is in the city. Because I, I support the city as a whole. I try to support local businesses. And I try to support the people that want to take the chance on living here, working here. And, you know, like I said, that's why I, I wanted to be on the interview panel. There are one of the panels to see the people that were coming before, looking for opportunities within the department. There were some excellent choices. I, I mean, I, I could, I, I could almost tell you verbatim, but I wrote in some of the notes that, why they made, you know, and they, they admitted, okay, I, I've been a volunteer firefighter, but I don't have paramedic training. But it's something I want to do. I'm willing to do it on my own. And I put those notes that, you know, this person is somebody that we need to, you know, if we can't get him in this round, keep him on a list that we can get him in the future. Work with him in a mentorship program so he knows what he needs, the best way to go about it, so we can hire these people. And I was, you know, I was looking, obviously, for qualities of people that you can see that, you know, that's something that there's a fire in the belly for. And that's, and that's what I put in the note. So, thank you for your comments. I appreciate that. And yes, I, if I stay on the commission, I definitely plan on keeping very involved and watching how our hiring processes go and hopefully volunteer for future panels.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, uh, for that answer, too. Um, it looks like that is all the questions we have from city council on, on this one, Gina. So, um, Ms. Nelson, excuse me. So if you would, uh, Vice President Hussein.
Sure, I would move the resolution of.
Sure, I would move the resolution of reappointment for Georgina, Gina Nelson as the fourth ward representative on the board of fire commissioners. Uh, this would be for a term to expire June 30th, 2024.
Great. The motion has been made. Um, is there further discussion? Seeing none, if, uh, Sherri, would you please call the roll? Also, member Bets.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor, yes. Motion carries eight zero.
Member Jackson.
Oh, Councilmember Jackson, I'm sorry. I looked right at you. Councilmember Jackson. Easy. Yes. It now carries eight zero. Uh, Ms. Nelson, um, we will take action on this this evening at council. There's no reason for you to be present unless you, you wish to be. Um, and then, um, as I mentioned earlier, reappointments do not need to be res sworn in. So if it passes council, you're all set.
Thank you all and have a very good, good evening and keep safe.
Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Next on our agenda is, um, a reappointment of Rodney Singleton on the police, I'm sorry, the fire, the Board of Fire Commissioners. So let me find Mr. Singleton. I don't see, uh, Mr. Singleton, if you're available, please raise your hand um, in the chat or in the participant dialogue. Um, and while we wait on that, we're going to move to, uh, Mr. Tracy Thomas, um, who is being appointed as an at-large member of the, or reappointed rather, as an at-large member of the Board of Water and Light. While we move him into presenter status, we, again, we just, we skipped Rodney Signal Singleton. We will come back if, uh, Mr. Singleton pops into the meeting before we end. But, um, in the interest of time, we're moving on to Mr. Tracy Thomas. Mr. Thomas, you are, um, now available to, able to talk. And if you want to turn your camera on, feel free. Otherwise, uh, same script, go ahead and give yourself a little bit of introduction, maybe some of the work you've done on the BWL Board of Commissioners and then, um, we'll turn it over to councilmember questions.
Thank you. Thank you, President Spatterford and councilmembers. Again, my name is Tracy Thomas. I retired in 2019 after serving first as a, a, a teacher in Delaware and then a couple of years in the Lansing School District. Um, then four years as a middle school administrator, um, the last 27 years as a high school administrator. Um, in that time, I've always given back to, um, to my, um, role, um, in the city. I've served as a chairperson for the MLK Holiday Commission, the chairperson for the Lansing Westside YMCA. The executive committee member, I was an executive committee member of the Lansing branch of the NAACP. A member of the executive board of the Lansing Boys and Girls Club. And, um, just recently finished serving as a human resources chair for the Lansing Board of Water and Light. I was recently, um, elected as the vice chair of Lansing Board of Water and Light. In, in that role, on the Board of Water and Light, I've served three terms for 12 years as a Lansing Board and Light Commissioner. Um, I served two stints as an HR committee chair, where I led the efforts of formally conducting annual evaluations of the Lansing Board of Light appointed employees, general manager, internal auditor, and the corporate secretary. Also had the distinct pleasure of leading the recruitment and hiring efforts of our recently hired internal auditor. In addition to my leadership roles while serving on the board, I have been on, uh, one of the most supportive commissioners for their first step program. Um, and they're also the college internship programs. Um, I'd love to be reappointed to continue providing the opportunities for young female and male students to further acquaint themselves with the Lansing Board of Water and Light. Um, I also like to, uh, very much be a part of moving the Lansing Board of Water and Light further along, becoming the utility, um, of the future with, uh, green and greener energy. Uh, now that I'm retired, I have the time, lots of energy, always dedication to continue this part, um, of being, um, the board of light, being a safer, reliable and affordable and greener utility company of the future. I, again, I thank you for allowing me to, to be here before you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Um, we'll open it up to questions, but I do want to say that, uh, Mr. Thomas was my principal. Um, and he retired 13 years after I left, so I can't, it can possibly be my fault, like Brian Jackson pushed Dr. Carnegie out into the wilderness. So I just wanted to be very clear, that's not what happened. All right. So we will open it up for questions for Mr. Thomas, uh, from councilmembers. Oh, there we go. Brian, uh, Mr. Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. It wa, I didn't push him out to the wilderness. I pushed him to the police board.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
So, Mr. Thomas, nice to see you again.
Very good seeing you too.
And thank you for all your service. You listed a lot of things that is very impressive and very community oriented. But, um, no offense, I mean, you've done this a long time on the board, but it does lack a little bit of like the, you know, utility specialty or energy or green transformation specialty or anything like that. So, and also nice seeing you again because I saw you Friday riding your bike in the park and we had a nice talk. I was like, well, since we're here, let me just ask these questions. I know one thing I said, did you read the IPCC International Panel on Climate Change 1.5 report? I was going to ask if you did that. Um, but let me just express some of my concerns.
Can I answer yes first? Did I say yes or could?
You said you were going to.
Well, I'm saying yes, did I have?
Oh, good, good. Um, but some of my concerns is that basically it seems like the Board Water and Light has really good people with a lot of um, community experience, but not quite the expertise. And I don't know who in there is driving the change or driving like the, the renewable percentage up, like who is that person? And I think that a lot of people are just kind of like think the same, well, we got to balance the rate payer and this and that, which is great and what you're supposed to do. But my concern on the board is that there's nobody to the left that's really has a strong voice when it comes to green and renewables. And I just want somebody there, no offense to you, but just so that at least has starts with one person out of however many voting members there is. And then it might just interject kind of a diverse opinion and different thoughts. So it's no offense to you. Um, I guess my question is, did you read the report and what do you think about it? Um, but either way, I know nothing's personal. I'm not sure how I'm going to vote, but I am not inclined to support a current member, especially when there were other people that, uh, weren't considered or didn't get a nomination that are more towards a different, I guess, collective opinion, if that makes any sense.
Yes. Thank you, council, um, councilmember, um, Jackson. Um, let me first share that I, I did get a chance to read the, the, um, Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change. I found it to be very, very, um, informative. I, I always, you know, and I agree with just about everything I'm on it. And, and really summarized, um, it talked about the differences between 1.5, um, Celsius and 2.5 in terms to, uh, two point Celsius in the global warming area and evaluated an extensive three-year, um, research study. And it was clear that we need to make a commitment to move away from fossil fuels and of the removals of, of carbon dioxide that is already in the atmosphere to prevent irreversible effects to the earth and destruction to the oceans and coastal areas. And so there were many points that it's a calling for us to, 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 to reach out to, um, to our citizens, um, to reach out to, to, um, our lawmakers, um, to the executive branch and across the world, um, to take immediate action so that we can stay, um, to the plan of 1.5 Celsius or below, so that our kids and, um, my kids and their kids and their kids' kids um, are, are not affected down the road. And so, yeah, and, and in terms of, um, you know, we have the late, we have 11 commissioners, um, eight of which are voting members. We all have spe, you know, expertise. Um, and we, I have, um, I have been consulting, um, with, um, Commissioner Ross, um, on the regular, on a regular basis. Um, I'm open. Um, um, I'm, I'm looking forward to, to, um, being a voice, being transparent and making sure that not only my greenness at Michigan State, but if I want to go green, I want to be greener. Um, and, um, in our, during our IRP process, you know, we're, you know, looking to be progressive in terms of getting rid of lead, I mean, excuse me, getting rid of, um, of coal and, um, and also, um, being, um, carbon neutral um, by, um, 2040.
Thank you. Mr. President, if I just may, I know we're short on time. Um, I appreciate all that. The only thing you said that does draw still some concern is that you said you don't agree with all of it. And which is fine, but my point is it's like 6,000 plus scientific resident references and all of the best scientists in the world are kind of pointing at this. So my thing would be somebody who basically agrees with all of it. That's all.
Mr. Jackson, I don't know if, uh, we could maybe rewind it. I, I've never said I didn't agree with, with, I didn't, I've never said I disagreed with any of it. I said, I was sharing some of the points with you. Um, I spied, found everything to be very, very, um, informative and, uh, but I never shared that I disagree with anything. Never, never mentioned that.
Um, and my last comment would be, instead of informative, I want the person to think it's scary, like really.
It's very scary.
That's all. And, and, and it's nothing personal, but I just don't know where I'm at on it.
Yeah. When I, when I mentioned that I don't want my kids or my kids' kids or their kid, that, that's scary. That's, that's, I was, you know, hoping that that's what I was expressing when I said that. Um, it's really important that, that we, we stay at the 1.5 Cs or less. Otherwise, it's going to be a catastrophe.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Um, before I move on to Councilmember Bets, I just want to make an announcement to the public that are joining us now. Uh, city council, um, we tried a new, a new method here today because we thought we might run long. So rather than running two different Zooms, we actually are running the same one concurrently and city council will resume, will start, excuse me, when the committee of the whole is finished. So if you're just joining us, you didn't miss any, any city council meeting, you just missed the committee of the whole and we will, we will, uh, start that meeting up after we finish this agenda and go through a brief closed session. But, um, you're in the right place, um, and at the right time. Just we're having a little discussion before the meeting begins, uh, through our committee of the whole process. So, um, thank you. Councilmember Jackson, I believe you're finished. If, okay, thank you. Um, councilmember Bets.
Thank you, President Spatterford. Really appreciate it. And, uh, thank you for being here today. I, I really appreciate you being willing to serve. Um, you know, I, this is going to be about clean energy, I'm a millennial. I'm going to be living with the effects of climate change forever. Um, and we've made, and you have made some decisions in the past. I'd like you to, uh, talk a little bit about specifically natural gas. Now, I understand that, um, when, when I've spoken to, uh, Dick Heffley, he has said that it's going to cost about a million dollars per percent of renewables that we run in the city. And my question is, we have the number, what have you done specifically to advocate for? And to ensure that future generations are not going to, um, live with the threat of climate change? And what have you done to be a champion in that, uh, fight, a fight that has you, uh, obviously hasn't been won yet because we're still building natural gas plants for the Board of Water and Light? So, uh, if you could address that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Well, I think that, that more specifically, I, I've, um, I've, I've been interviewed, of course, by our person that's doing the RRP, IRP, and, um, I've shared with them my, my, um, concerns and my, um, my wishes and, and, um, and that's been pretty much, um, my, you know, my involvement in, in, in that area. Um, I have been studying extensively. Now, I'm a, I'm a quick learner, good communicator, very dedicated employee, very, very dedicated board member. I'm looking forward to, um, um, of doing some extensive research, um, and, and also, um, contributing moving forward. Um, my mentor on the board, um, or I should say the person that I've gone to, um, in relationship to, um, issues surrounding, um, energy and, you know, green, um, being greener and all that has been, um, has been Mr. Ross. I've also sat down on a regular basis with, um, with our general manager, um, Mr. Peffley. Now, we talk about, um, gas, you know, we're, you're looking at a portfolio of solar, wind, um, and hydro. Um, and of course, when the sun's out, you know, when, you know, sun, when the sun's not out and the wind's not blowing, we have to, you know, we have to do, we have to do our, we have to do gas so that we can continue to, to support our, our, um, our customers. Um, but that's been my limited, but I'm open. I'm, I'm retired. I'm, I'm committed. Um, and, um, as, uh, councilperson Jackson shared with you, I was riding my bike and it was, I wanted to have that conversation with him. I'm looking at moving forward, um, touching base with, with, um, with, with folks who are, who are experts in that area so that I can be, as a vice chair, I can be a voice um, for this, you know, for this good, good movement. My son's an electrical engineer. He works in energy. So he's another resource that I have. But, um, that's, I hope I answered your questions.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'll, uh, I'll talk to you, I'll talk to you offline. I have a question, a couple of questions about the BWL, but, um, in the interest of time, I'll move on. I do want to, i- if the HR committee though would be so gracious as to pass along to Vice President Hussein, your list of internal auditors you didn't hire, we're in the market for one and we're coming up short in our applicant pool. So, you know, that would be ideal, uh, please. Um, so thank you, Mr. Thomas, uh, for, for being here this evening. Vice President Hussein.
Sure, I would move the resolution of reappointment, uh, for Mr. Tracy Thomas as an at-large member to the Board of Water and Light Commissioners. Uh, this would be for a term to expire June 30th, 2024.
All right, everybody get your microphones unmuted as I slowly prepare to call on Sherri to call the roll.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Unfortunately, no.
Councilmember Jackson.
No offense, uh, Mr. Thomas. I hope you do become that champion, but no.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Bets.
No.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Motion carries five, three.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Thomas, this will be up for the, uh, on the agenda this evening. At the city council meeting, there's no need for you to be present, as I've mentioned others, and given this is a reappointment, should the reappointment go through your, um, your swearing in is automatic. So no need to make an appointment with the clerk.
Thank you, President Spatterford, and thank you for the time, um, councilmembers. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, let me see here. Our next appointment is, uh, Sandra Zirkle, uh, as a fourth ward member for the Board of Water and Light. Let me find her. I know she's here. Uh, I think this is. Give her a minute. Uh, Ms. Zirkle, are you there?
I think she's having a difficulty unmuting. If you can unmute her.
Okay.
Thank you, Sherri. I wrote her a note. I, my iPad doesn't do that. Uh, thank you all, the city council, uh, members of, this has been a long evening for you with all these interviews. Um, a couple of things, uh, most of you know me. I have, I've been around for a while. I've known most of you politically and personally. So, uh, you know where I'm at. Uh, my major background is labor. Uh, I've been on the Labor Council. I was president of my local and things like that. Um, one of the things I want to start out with is I heard a lot of concerns about uh, some of the commissioners being there for, for too long. Uh, I was remembering when I heard that, the first two years that I was on this commission, because it is such a wide, diverse thing that we have to look at from personnel to energy efficiency to, you know, COVID strikes, we've had cyber attacks, we've had ice storms. Um, and we as a commission have to deal with that. The first couple of years, I felt like I was kind of wandering, you know, there was so much to, to take. So I don't think someone who's been there a long time, uh, necessarily is a bad thing. Um, uh, I feel that the experience is, is beneficial in the long run. Um, on the board, I've served, served as chair, vice chair, the human, uh, service, uh, human relations, uh, chair. Uh, I've served on the committee. Um, I, I think everyone should have had. I I think everyone should have had a quick point of information regarding our energy issues and our IRP. One of the things I'd like people to remember in our mission statement, it talks about the certain, the mission of the the board is to have safe, reliable and afforded affordable utility products and services. We have probably, as a commission, in the last five or six years, met maybe 12 to 14 times regarding an IRP strategic plan that all included renewables, energy efficiency, getting down to using only renewables, and all the evidence that comes to us is is the price. Someone talked about, Tracy was just talking about, you know, if the sun isn't moving, you know, just right, or if the wind isn't blowing, there's no way money-wise for us to store that energy at this point. There's not been one single person that's on the Executive Committee of the Board of Water and Light that has not wished that we could do all renewables and energy efficiency. And as you've seen by the report that I gave you, approximately by 2030, the 25% of the people will be on some renewable energy would be serviced by some energy efficiency, I'm sorry, renewable energy with our solar and wind and what we've done. You know, natural gas is not the the actual optimum product that we we need to use, but it was more efficient. We will be by 2025, we will have no coal used for within the Board of Water and Light. That's within the next five years because all the plants will be using some other form of energy. So that's basically what I wanted to say and prepared for questions.
Yes, thank, yeah, thank you, Ms. Zirkle. Councilmember Spitzley, I believe your hand is up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioners Urkel, thank you for your service. I I guess for me, a couple of things you said probably gave me cause to pause. So I I get I get the the dynamics regarding, you know, renewables and how, you know, Michigan isn't the most ideal place for for sun and wind and and we're still, you know, kind of dealing with the challenges of how to store the excess energy and connectivity issues and grid issues. I I get all that, but I think that and I and I believe the board does, but I I was a little concerned, kind of. I felt that your your statement was a little dismissive on the the importance of renewables and the importance of moving forward. And so I I wanted to give you kind of the opportunity, maybe to qualify or to go into a little bit more detail of your commitment to renewable energy and your commitment to continually to push the board forward to to meet those benchmarks and goals.
I'm terribly sorry that I gave that impression. That is not, but I've been talking about it so long, so I might minimize. You know, I might sound like I'm minimizing it. No, I mean, like I said, from Dick Peffley on down, his objective would be to be 100% renewable. And I think it would be, you know, terrific if we were closer than that. And we were, will continue to strive towards that. There are, if people are willing to pay for it, they can actually hook into a total renewable situation in their residency. They can make that arrangement and they get, I'm not sure what what it is on their bill. But they can do that. But Councilperson Spitzley, you know as well as I do, we have several people. We have and it's growing because of the COVID thing, the number of people that are, the governors asked us not to shut anybody off and we were ahead of that program. So and they still are there. That order from the governor is still there. So we have people that, you know, can't afford to pay their bill and we have to deal with that on a regular basis. And every community within your your regions, the City Council people, you know that you have people that can't afford to pay their utility bills. And, you know, we have to look at that when we present how we're going to provide electricity and water and chilled water for the community. So no, my we discuss it all the time and the board is constantly looking and we're pushing for them to look for new ways to get renewables and expand that renewable. We just hooked up with another wind program in Tuscola, you know, as you see on our thing. Our person that is responsible for that was able to save us several million dollars, which will help in the long run with, you know, how we handle renewables. So no, my commitment is definitely for towards renewables and I'm, you know, and I push the the board to continue looking at those.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Ms. Zirkle, again for being here. I know that you do a lot for the community and I also know that you know, you're a professional and, you know, whatever I vote on is not going to be offensive to you, but just some of the concerns. So who is the person in the board that challenges the narrative that we've heard since at least 2012? That when it's not windy or not sunny, then we got to do something. Not only that challenges that narrative, but who is also then saying, well, when it isn't, what can we do that is the minimal effect to the environment and other alternatives? Because my understanding is that although we are switching away from coal and going to gas, our our gas commitment is so is so strong, the new plant is so big that we're going to be using gas for so much longer than is going to be necessary, but also so much longer past the point where as a collective world, nation, city, everything that we need to curb what we're doing. So who's that person that's saying we'll bring in so-and-so's doing it, let's bring in them, let's bring in the top this. Who's the person saying it's been since 2012 that we made this great plan, but now it's 2020? And we know some things has changed, not everything, but some things have, and I think we need a refresher in this because there might be a better option. So that's my question on that. And also it's it's just no offense, but I just feel like the current makeup of the board, the commission is all great people with different backgrounds, but still like a collective. Can we get a seven to one vote, a seven to three vote, a seven to two? Because I don't think it currently represents the makeup of the city, especially the way things are going. So I guess my question is, who's the person in the room that says, let's take another look at this? There might be another option. Can we find out from everybody possible?
As always, Dick is the general manager and he he directs his staff. We're not responsible as the commission to direct staff. They bring us proposals, we work on them, we change them, we encourage them to move forward, particularly on, you know, the renewable energy portion. As you may, maybe you weren't around at the time, but so about seven or eight years ago, we reopened the dams so that we would get two more percent of renewable energy. But it's Dick that he has, he has staff members that will come to him with the facts and figures of does this seem feasible? You know, where is this going to happen with our customers as far as rates? Are we going to be able to sell this to the customers? And how do we do it? How do we move into it? And each commissioner is is doing the same thing. You know, all of us, all eight of us, we have Doug Jester, who is not a voting, but there's nobody that's got better information about the environment and, you know, he constantly asks questions and pushes the board. But, you know, some of it, we have to to look at what is the best for the customer and the city and the environment. You know, we have to look at all three factors when we make up the, make our decisions about what they're doing with their strategic plan. Also, the strategic plan goes out to the public. This, how we, what we're going to do with renewable energy, what we're going to do with the Board of Water and Light, we have meetings. This, the the piece that I passed out to you, there were approximately six different meetings set throughout the city that were invited, people were invited to come in and, you know, put their info, you know, input into how they feel that the Board of Water and Light can change or what they needed to do in any area and that included the environmental issues. So and they will be doing that again with the strategic plan that they will be proposing sometime next year.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may have a quick follow-up.
Yeah, just let me make one quick announcement, Brian. So for those that are just joining us, we've got quite a few more that came in. We're still in the Committee of the Whole. We will, City Council will begin as soon as the Committee of the Whole has adjourned. So just, you're in the right place. Just hang with us. Thank you, Brian. Sorry.
You're right. Just one of the things that I did observe, so I went to a few of those meetings and I've I've heard over and over again, the people that attend the meetings, the comments are generally switched to renewables as fast as possible. Get different perspectives in there, all those different things. And I know they showed up to them all and I know that, you know, notes were taken. I know that they're supposedly incorporated into the Integrated Resource Plan and all these different plans. So the public has been out and I know they've been asking for certain things for a while. And I just want the board to reflect that, at least that percentage or more, or something proportional to like the people's voices and concerns.
Yes, thank you. I will, you know, relay that, that people felt that way.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Looks like I've got one more from Councilmember Bess.
Thank you, President Spatterford. And thank you, Sandy, for being willing to serve. I say this to everybody, it's it's an important service to do and I really appreciate you being here. You know, one one thing that I've been reflecting on as we've been talking about who's been to public comment, what they've said, everything about costs. One thing that I remember is going to one of these public meetings where I was asked, which thing do you prefer, reliability, cost or renewables? And to me, I think that is a little bit of a misnomer of a question. And looking around the room, everybody was, you know, I was probably one of the youngest people there at the age of 28. Everybody my age and younger expect us to have a world to live in without mass starvation and death. And if we don't switch to renewables, that's going to happen. What are you going to do to just fight for 100% renewables? I I don't care what the public has to say at this point anymore. I need a world to live in when I'm older. And what are you going to do to be a champion to make sure that me, my kids and my grandchildren have a place to live where millions of people are dying because of climate change? Thank you.
And along with that, we did a survey and the vast majority of customers are willing to pay a slight more for the renewable process. And we've taken that into consideration and Dick and the staff know that that, you know, but they're not, it's not going to be, they're willing to pay for it. And they and the staff knows that because they took a a survey of their customers and both residential and business. And those customers were willing to pay more because they believe it. And so the percentage was very high. And so Dick is aware of that and that's incorporated in all the new plans he puts forward. That he can probably convince the the customers to pay for, you know, that. But they're not going to be able to, I don't know what the actual figures is if we went to 100% renewable like tomorrow. So I don't know what that cost would be. And so that's the other thing that Dick has to do. But they keep telling me it's, it it would not be good, you know, right now. And so the, but they're, they take that into consideration when they're making their plans. They know that people will are willing to pay for it in the most part.
How old are you, Sandy, if if you don't mind me asking?
Pardon me?
How old are you?
A little older than you.
Okay, um.
Quite a bit.
So so the the reason I'm asking is because this is the concern that I have, right? You're older, you're the one in this position making these decisions, but the the lasting effects of climate change aren't going to affect you, right? They're going to affect me and my kids and and possibly grandchildren if you have them.
Are you trying to assume that I have a fear for anybody that's younger than me?
Sorry, no. What I'm asking, Sandy, what I'm asking is what are you going to do to be a leader in this? And what are you going to do to change Water and Light, to make sure that our lives are safe later?
I'm asking questions at every meeting that we have. When when can we get more renewables? What is in your plans? Where are they? And Dick is constantly replacing them. But my age shouldn't have anything to do with whether I get put on this board or not. I I believe.
No, it it shouldn't. I'm asking because of whether or not.
Well, your inference was that because I'm older, it's like I I don't have any worries about that. The other worry about someone my age is how am I going to pay for that, living on a retirement and a pension? If it's going to cost me another, you know, 150 to $200 to have renewables.
Your cost my grandchildren's lives, right?
All right, I think we're going to move on from this. So Councilmember Wood, and then we're going to move on to the next appointment. Thank, Councilmember, do you have other questions or?
No, no, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wood, please.
President Spatterford, I think we have to be very careful that we are not talking about ageism and looking at appointments based on that, that, you know, it's whether we believe the person is qualified enough to serve or not needs to be the consideration. And we have to be very careful that we're not running afoul of our own human rights ordinance. Thank you.
Nobody was implying that, Carol. Nobody was implying that. I was asking as a lead up to another question. Thank you.
As I said, I'm going to. I have the floor. I'm not sure that you had recognized Councilmember Bess, but that was my statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Folks, if we could still maintain, let me let me call back and forth, although it is committee, let's 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 keep it a little sense of order just because of the Zoom environment. So Ms. Zirkle, I think that does it for our questions. I appreciate you answering them.
Thank you.
Being with us this evening. We'll take the vote in just a minute. If it passes and passes through council, you know, you know the drill. But there's no swearing in and you did not here attend the council meeting this evening, even though it started 26 minutes ago. So we will have Vice President Hussein make the motion. Vice President Hussein.
Spatterford, I would move the resolution of reappointment for Sandra Zirkle. This would be for a fourth ward position on the Board of Water and Light, Board of Commissioners, and the term would be to expire June 30th, 2024.
Thank you. The motion is properly before us. I see no further discussion. So Sherry, would you please call the roll? I'd appreciate it.
Councilmember Jackson.
No.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
No.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Bess.
No.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatterford.
Yes.
Motion carries five, three.
Okay, next up, we have two more appointments. One, I can, that I can locate the appointee on the attendee list. And that is John Cron is next. And while I pull him into the panelist mode, I will just remind folks that may have just joined us that this is still the Committee of the Whole. We have one more action item before the the council goes into closed session, at which point we will start up our regular council meeting. So you are in the right place, just a little early for our schedule this evening. So thank you for bearing with us. The next one, Mr. Cron, you are able to speak if you wish. The drill is give us a little little introduction of yourself and we will ask. Uh, the drill is give us a, a little, little introduction of yourself and we will ask some questions, uh, if necessary.
Hey there. Sorry for the, uh, the bad lighting. I still have yet to figure out how to make it. So I don't have terrible lighting in this room. Uh, John Cron, First Ward, Levon, South, uh, Magnolia Avenue. Um, and this will be my second, uh, term, hopefully on the Public Services Board. Um, very tuned into environmental is.
Folks, I'm not sure what happened, but the Zoom meeting just ended. We're going to take a five-minute recess while we regather ourselves. I apologize. All right. As promised, we are coming back to order at 7:35, um, or at least some semblance of order. So, uh, Mr. Cron, I, I, I think we pretty much lost you at good evening. So why don't you go ahead and start from the beginning and then we will open it up to questions.
Let me first apologize for missing my appointment two weeks ago. I was in the middle of driving my kids home from daycare and just totally forgot. So John Cron, I live in the First Ward on, on South Magnolia Avenue. I'm very, um, in tune with environmental issues in particular. I've really enjoyed serving on the Board of Public Service and getting to know the city better. Um, the, the actual underpinnings of the city, you know, the, the daily workings that make this whole big machine grind forward every day. Um, being an environmentalist, you know, I'm particularly keen on knowing about our wastewater, um, service, our wastewater treatment plants and our sewers. Um, very interested in knowing about cart and recycling issues, um, very interested about, uh, O and M, and street trees and environmental stewardship and, uh, just all the things, like I said, that make the city work. Yeah.
Thank you for that introduction and thank you for your continued interest in serving on the Board of Public Service. Um, is there, are there questions from the council, uh, from the committee? Uh, Councilmember Wood, yes.
Uh, thank you, John. I was just wondering, it's a question I ask quite often to people, um, either applying for a Board of Commissioner reappointment. And that is, um, have you had any training as far as the Open Meetings Act or FOIA or any, um, ethics training? Um, as part of your role in the Public Service Board?
Um, no formal training. There's just been a lot of emails, both, uh, I think we've passed some emails around the Public Service Board, but certainly also I'm on the Ingham Conservation District Board and, and there's kind of frequent reminders about, uh, the governor's, um, executive orders as pertaining to the Open Meetings Act and, you know, things like that. So no formal training now, just a lot of anecdotal emails.
Thank you.
Hopefully no one replied at all to those emails. Uh, Councilmember Betts.
Hey, John, thanks for being here today and thank you for being willing to serve. I guess my question is, being on the Public Service Board, what has been some of the, the big challenges that you've seen as you've been on the board with the relation to the public service? And what, what things do you see the board is working towards right now to kind of changes to, to make things more positive?
I, I'd say far and away, the biggest challenge and the thing that we spend the most time talking about is streets and sidewalks and how underfunded they are and what we're going to do to maintain and, and try to improve, um, our streets and our sidewalks. Um, you know, I, I, I like to tell people all the time, we need $20 million a year to maintain the roads as they are. Um, and we get like one million a year. So we're falling behind every year and that's going to be, there, there's really nothing to be done about it until the Michigan Legislature, uh, changes the way that they, you know, dole out, uh, road tax money. And that's not going to happen until we fix gerrymandering. So it's a tough nut to crack and we just have to do our part as board members to relay that situation that the city is in to the constituents. And, um, you know, just try to explain it in layperson's terms. So they don't think that, uh, you guys are just taking out the money and, you know, betting on a horse. Um, there's just not enough money to, to go around. Um, we all want to see these things fixed and we all want to see, we all want a great, you know, uh, modern city. Um, none of us want to have to replace our shocks and our brake rotors every six months, you know? Um, so we're all doing what we can. And I think just communication between the, the board and the public is, is kind of key in these, um, fiscal times. Um, so that's one thing. Uh, another thing has been, uh, PFAS. Um, PFAS in the, um, wastewater effluent. Um, you know, there, there's, uh, there was, um, a bit of evasiveness around it for a while, um, over, you know, which industrial, um, clients were, um, emitting, uh, over the action level of PFAS in their inner effluent. I never did get the answer from our, our people. I had to actually just inquire with the, uh, with Eagle to find out who it was, but, um, that's going to be a challenge, you know, going forward is we don't want to punish industry, you know, that the city thrives on industry. We, um, I guess maybe find carrots and sticks to make sure that people are, uh, shoot, I don't know if you guys. Exit full screen. Bear with me.
Are you having issues, John?
Hey, I'm sorry. Did, did I freeze?
Nope, you're here.
Okay, because you guys all froze, but I don't know if you still heard me and everything I said.
I heard what you said, but, um, you, you, you did, your image did delay for a second.
Okay. So I, I think I hopefully summed it up for you.
Councilmember Betts, did that answer your question or satisfied, um, your inquiry?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much, John, for answering that question. Thank you, President Spatafor.
Councilmember Spitzley, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, thank you for your service, John. So I wanted to kind of follow up on a couple of things. The first thing is when you talk about, um, your time on the public service and you talk about, um, what, what, you talk about being out more in the public. So what is to ensure that there is transparency, that, you know, you are, we are out in the public, that you're reaching, um, the, the constituency that you talk about? That's my first question.
Well, y- you know, Samara and I are both very active on the East Side Neighborhood Transportation, uh, Facebook, uh, page being, being the Ward One Representatives. Uh, one of us is probably at large, maybe it's me. I can't remember. Maybe it's the Maravada. Um, you, you know, so we're constantly, uh, answering people's questions about, uh, public services, uh, on Facebook and stuff like that. Um, you know, I just, I'm out and about in the community every day for my day job. Um, you know, uh, I work for the land bank. So we're in every corner of the city.
I haven't lost anything.
Excuse me?
Uh, that's cross chatter. I'm just trying to figure out who it was. Go ahead, John. I'm sorry.
It sounded like Sherry.
Oh, Sherry.
Oh, so anyway, uh, you, you know, I spend, I spend each and every working day actually out in, in the community, working with, um, people. And, uh, so I have any number of conversations about the roads, about street trees, about sewers, about flooding. You know, I'm just, I'm just trying to be as helpful as I can be, uh, whenever I'm out and about with people.
Thank you. And then the second thing you said that, um, kind of sent up an antenna is your response about PFAS. Um, and about how you, you, you said that this administration or the Public Services Department, um, they weren't providing you with appropriate information on, uh, the industrial sources of PFAS so that you had to go. Um, what did you do specifically to then address the PFAS issue?
I brought it up at a board meeting and I, I named the, the one industrial, um, I guess, uh, offender. I mean, I don't know. There's, there's no actual, like I said, there's no stick. So they're not actually breaking any laws, I don't think, but, um, you know, I, I got it out there i- in the open at the board meeting and I, I just have asked, you know, what we're doing to, um, do anything about it. And I, you know, think I've probably used that same carrot stick metaphor in the past, uh, um, that we need to have, you know, consequences for failure to act, but also, uh, the industry is important to the city and we, we can't be punitive. Uh, we need to help people, um, do the right thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cron. Um, before I move on to the next one, I did, I just want to compliment you too. I've seen, uh, you all over Facebook answering public service questions. Um, taking a lot of my job away from me. So, you know, making my day easier. I very much appreciate that. So, um, we will move on to Councilmember Dunbar, uh, for a question.
Thank you. It's not a question, actually. It, it, I was actually going to talk about how much I am impressed by how vocal and, um, transparent John is through Facebook and through communications, um, about anything going on with relation to public service. And he has no fear challenging anyone. Um, so I appreciate that as well. Um, I think that you're doing an excellent job and I am happy to vote for you again.
Thanks, John. And just, I think Councilmember Dunbar, John, also just sort of point of clarification, you are an at-large member and we will be appointing you to that again. So, uh, Councilmember Hussein may have been addressing that point, but if not, I will, I will call on Councilmember Hussein and then hopefully after you're done with your line of questioning, you will make a motion.
There, there is no line of questioning. Um, you know, I had the opportunity along with Councilman Garza to, uh, attend a recent Public Service Board meeting. Uh, and I have to say, I've been in, you know, to a number of meetings. I was on the park board for five years. Um, and in my role as a city council person, I have attended a number of boarding, boards and commissions and, um, I was incredibly impressed, uh, John, with your team that you guys have over there. Uh, from the chair to the vice chair, uh, to the at-large reps and to the ward reps. It was very clear, um, that you guys do your homework, uh, that you take that, uh, you know, those positions incredibly seriously. Um, and that is really, really important to us here on city council, uh, because obviously we take, uh, your advice, um, at just about every turn, uh, particularly when it comes to public services and the six divisions, uh, that public services oversees is an incredibly, incredibly depart, uh, important department. And that board is incredibly important. That was no surprise to me. Um, I think, you know, when we talk about community engagement, uh, we talk about what you guys do. You know, basically you do to get out in front of people, um, out in the city and to onboard issues and, and to, you know, enhance transparency. Um, I know every ward representative has, uh, monthly constituent meetings. Um, I can say for myself, uh, in, in my ward that I think probably prior to COVID, I had not had a constituent contact meeting in almost over two years where someone from that, uh, board, uh, that commission, I was not, uh, present. Uh, whether that be Nancy, whether that be Walt, whether that be, uh, Samara, Jason, yourself. Uh, and so we really, really appreciate everything that you guys are doing, uh, in terms of your work, uh, and your efforts to be transparent and engaging. So thank you. Uh, with that being said, I would move, uh, the resolution of reappointment, uh, for John Cron, uh, for an at-large member, uh, position on the Board of Public Services. And this would be for a term to expire June 30th, 2024.
You, Vice President Hussein, um, is there any further discussion or questions for Mr. Cron?
President Spatafor, uh, just for the sake of, uh, transparency, John donated, donated my campaign. So, uh, does that mean that I shouldn't vote on this particular measure? Uh, Jim, could you answer that as well? I guess one of you should know.
I'll let Jim answer it. Um, but typically we've, that's not been a determining factor in, in whether you should or should not vote, but I will defer to the city attorney.
No, not necessarily. Uh, you might want to file a disclosure anyway with the Ethics Board.
All right. Okay. So, um, motion's been made. Um, Sherry, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, zero.
All right. Well, um, Mr. Cron, if you didn't hear me say it, uh, but six or seven other times, um, this appointment will go through a city council this evening. And if it is passed by city council, you will be automatically reappointed to the Board of Public Service. So thank you for your continued interest in serving the city. Um, have a good night.
Thanks so much for your time.
Yeah.
Good night.
Good night. And I'm going to double check one more time, but I do not believe that Rodney Singleton is on. Um, so, uh, for the public paying attention, the city council is going to disappear for a few minutes. Actually, Jim, I have a question for you. Um, this business on closed session, because we're so late, um, can it hold for a couple of weeks?
I thought you were going to ask that question. Yes, we can put it over.
All right.
Sorry, Heather's been on.
Heather, I'm so sorry, but at least you got to enjoy the meeting with the rest of us. Um, so folks, uh, we're going to go ahead and, uh, skip the closed session this evening in the interest of time. Um, so we did just have a break, um, but does anybody need a break before we go back? Okay. Um, just as a warning, um, for folks that are joining us from the public, we've had some Zoom technical issues this evening wherein the, um, the meeting will kick everybody out. If that happens, just click the link again. Um, what's, what will happen is if that happens again, I will wait five minutes before resuming the meeting so that the public is not, um, in the dark on what we've discussed. Um, and I won't resume discussions until City TV has begun broadcasting. So, um, we're going to, um.
Can we formally, um, speak to, um, moving the appointment for Rodney Singleton and to formally adjourn Committee of the Whole?
What do you want me to do with the Rodney Singleton business?
Um, just make a note for the record that, um, he wasn't present and so we'll be moving it to the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll just move that on to the next meeting. And then also absent any other business for the Committee of the Whole at 7:49, we are adjourned.